Thank you all for being here today. The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page. Alderwoman Ingracia.
Present.
Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenber- thank you. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bucaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Page. Alderman Carter.
Here.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-two present.
Warren, being present, I'm just so honored today to have Dr. Marie T. Brown from Mariah City of Refuse Church, which is in the beautiful Hamilton Heights neighborhood, to come today to open us up in prayer. Dr. Brown?
Yes, God bless you. First John five and fourteen, and this is the confidence that we have in him, that if we ask anything according to his will, he here with us. God, we thank you this morning for being gracious and being so good to let us see another day. We thank you, Lord, for the leaders that you have placed in office by the predestination of God. We pray this day that you look upon every alderman and our government. We pray for the strength and the wisdom and the guidance and the insight that you would give them to run our city and to make provision for our people. Lord, we pray that the wisdom of God in the hand of the Lord be upon each city official. We pray that even the purpose and the will that you've given them and the vision that you have imparted to them, Lord, that they will be able to open the doors of opportunity. We pray for the favor of God upon them as they go through God and the government and give favor in the offices and the things that they have to do in the future. Now, God, we actually the blessed in your hands, and you said whatsoever that your hands touch is your prosper. Let it prosper, in Jesus' name we pray. Thank God, amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate you. We're probably gonna have to reach out to you and have you come lead us off in prayer again.
Yes, Bishop Hankerson is my bishop.
Oh, wow. Well, we all know Bishop Hankerson. Tell them we said hi.
Do we all?
His best friend is Alderwoman Marlene Davis.
Yes, yes. I work as his supervisor in the jurisdiction.
Oh, wow, wow. Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Bless you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on the motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Exactly.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the nineteenth and seconded by...
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Alderman from the twenty-second. There you go. It's been moved seconded. Alderwoman Howard, you're recognized on resolution number six.
Yes, first off, I would like to welcome those people in on the Zoom today. Emmett Coleman, Jennifer Boss, Nolan Sanders, Carrie Flynn, Judy McGrath, Lisa Parker, Ashley Davis, Karen Wagner, and our speakers, Arlena Fish and Dr. Juan Cascaro. I'd like to read the resolution at this time. Resolution number six honoring National Loyalty Day. Whereas it has come to the attention of this honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that President Dwight D. Eisenhower proclaimed May first, nineteen fifty-nine, the first official observance of Loyalty Day. And whereas on July eighteenth, nineteen fifty-eight, U.S. Congress Public Law eighty-five, five, twenty-nine made the day an official holiday and is listed among other patriotic and national observances, including Mother's Day, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and more. Whereas Loyalty Day is a special day for the reaffirmation of loyalty to the United States for the recognition of the heritage of American freedom. And whereas the president is required, requested to issue a proclamation calling on the United States government officials to display the flag of the United States on all government buildings on Loyalty Day and inviting the people of the United States to observe Loyalty Day with appropriate ceremonies. And whereas each year since its inception as a legal holiday in nineteen fifty-eight, every president has recognized the day with an official proclamation. And whereas memorable statements written by various American presidents include the following. This Loyalty Day, let us remember what defines us as one American people. It is our dedication to common ideals rather than the similarities of origin or creed. Let us reaffirm that embracing this truth lies at the heart of what it means to be a citizen, Barack Obama's Presidential Proclamation, Labor Day, twenty sixteen. For nearly thirty years, Americans have celebrated May first as Loyalty Day. This is a day to reaffirm our loyalty to the land of liberty and to recall with pride and gratitude the generations of our countrymen who persevered, who preserved our freedom by their loyalty to America, Ronald Reagan's Presidential Proclamation on Loyalty Day, nineteen eighty-seven. Dedication, devotion, and loyalty to our country and to the free democratic precepts upon which it is founded has always been a cherished tradition with our people, from our founding fathers to our servicemen now serving in the far-flung corners of the world, President John F. Kennedy's Proclamation on Loyalty Day, nineteen sixty-three. Whereas St. Louis groups, including Princeton Heights Neighborhood, the Holly Hills Neighborhood, and various VFW posts in and around the city, including St. Louis County, have historically celebrated Loyalty Day with event speakers, parades. Whereas National Loyalty Day also kicks off National Military Appreciation Month, culminating with Memorial Day. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to remember and honor National Loyalty Day and those local organizations sponsoring activities. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy for presentation at a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. At this time, I'd like to introduce the, Ms. Dr. Juan Cascaro. Cascararo, I'm sorry, of Venezuela, he would like to speak. Dr. Cascaro?
Hello, nice to meet you. My name is Juan Cascarano. I'm from Venezuela. I've been living in the United States around four years. I've been two years living in San Luis. I am a doctor with a specialty in general surgery, and I moved to the United States from Venezuela, although because of the political and economical bad situation that we are going through, I also came for one political problem that I had specifically with the government. I would like to share my experience, of course, in these few minutes that I have with you all. I would like to aware you all about some red flags that I've seen in the United States lately, which concern me a lot in base of the experience that I had before in my country. I never have been a politician or a political person, but in Venezuela, we all ended up being politicians away. So my hometown is Valencia in Venezuela, and I had a partner. His name is Evan Campos. And we moved to Caracas, which is the capital, to do a residency in an anesthesiology, and I did it in general in plastic surgery, because that's what it was when I applied for. In the hospital where he was working, he got stabbed on his wrist, and he got a wound on his head with a gun. And that happened inside of a public hospital. When there was a media scandal, actually, those news got even too early. And me being gay, I couldn't even say that I was his partner, because although in Venezuela, being gay is not illegal, we can, we don't have any legal rights to our partners. And of course, we are gonna be exposed to a really, really severe bullying from everyone. So I couldn't get inside the hospital. We didn't have family in Caracas, because we were living alone in Caracas. And I have to pretend that I was his brother, because we have a similar physical appearance. So of course, I got some interviews from the TV news. Of course, I had to invent that my last name was Campos and not Cascarano, because that was the only way that I could at least see him and treat him in some way. So the thing is like when he did a claim to the investigation, everything turned against himself. The government of Venezuela, they didn't want to show to the world that the public hospitals were unsafe. So they stayed and they turned everything against him, saying that he stabbed himself. And the wound that he has on his head was because he did it to himself, because he was doing like kind of a protest from the opposition against the socialist government of Venezuela. So they threatened us to kill us if he didn't sign a paper, assuming that he indeed recognized that he stabbed himself. So we had so many bad situations around it that at the end of the day, he has to sign out. And he, we, he had a presentation regimen that he has to go every month with criminals to sign that he was in the country. So when we moved back to Valencia, he started over a new residency. I couldn't finish plastic surgery because of that reason. In Caracas is the only place in Venezuela where the program of plastic surgery is. So we ended up back in Valencia. And three years after his residency, when he was about to graduate, they didn't let him graduate. They told him that he was then mentally capable of attending anyone, because someone that stabbed himself as a protest mechanism against a government is something that is not related to healthy person with a mental capabilities, you know? So me being his partner, of course, I had too many things against myself. I couldn't be allowed to work instead in hospitals, instead in clinics. And we, I ended up selling auto parts. Me being a doctor with a really a special specialty, I had to sell auto parts to some stores, because I wasn't allowed to work in Venezuela. So under threats from the government, plus insecurity, plus Kevin, my ex-boyfriend at the moment, he, the one who was stabbed, his father was killed in a robbery in front of his family. So with all those bad experiences and the specific experience with the government, and the fact that we couldn't work as a doctor in Venezuela, we realized that we should move out of the country. And we chose the United States, because first of all, this is a country that I love. I know this is a country where the democracy is real, where there's no fake democracy. And I know that the human rights in this country are respected. People are respectful at all. And I've been in so many countries, and there's not a country like the United States. Now I'm a resident. I'm a resident in the United States. I'm not a citizen yet, but I'm so honored for being with you all, because I know that something that we're sharing common in this meeting is the love for this country. And I know that if we gather together, we could move forward and take this country ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and your story. It's really moving and eye-opening. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Doctor. Also, at this time, I'd like to recognize there are a few more people on the call. Charlie Metzger from St. Louis Firefighters, Phil Menendez, retired police officer Cedric Redman, Orlando Luis Pardo Lozlo, and Kim McGrath. And Lena Fish would like to speak at this time. Ms. Fish?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting me. I came to this country from the former Soviet Union thirty years ago, and I will be very brief today. I just want to encourage you to support this resolution to celebrate the Loyalty Day. I'll tell you what the people in the socialist countries like Western Europe, Soviet Union, obviously, Asia, South American socialist country were doing on the May first. On the May first, we were celebrating the Worker Solidarity Day. And it was always organized. It was not voluntarily. People would go and have a good time and, you know, just celebrate their freedom. No, no, no. It was a very ideologically grounded holiday. It was always organized by the local party and union leaders, and it was based in Marx, Karl Marx, and Vladimir Lenin philosophy and ideology. And the point, the main goal was that the people, the workers, the laborers of the whole world eventually reunite and fire the revolution around the world, the socialist revolution. So what we would be forced pretty much to do, it was pretty much mandatory. It was not voluntary holiday. So we would have to go to the major plaza of each big, large, or small town, or farm, and the local party leaders would be there presented somewhere on the task thing, on the top ground, and the laborer would bring the portraits of the major Communist Party leader, chant the silly slogans, sing the songs. And again, it was, and praise the party leader for what they do for a common people. So that was the main reason for May first Worker Solidarity Day. Again, the main goal was to start the world's revolution eventually. So millions and millions of people like me immigrated to this country just to live back total lack of freedom, total lack of normal human life, and hundreds of daily troubles. And we left this holiday without any regret. I believe that there are wonderful two holidays in this country already established in September, the Labor Day for the workers, and May the first tomorrow, this holiday that hopefully we will start celebrating in St. Louis, the Loyalty Day to this country. And it's a wonderful American heritage. It has a very strong, long history in this country. And I don't understand why some people want to ground their holidays in communist and socialist ideology rather than American freedom and American values. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
That's all I have for the speakers. Thank you very much.
All right. Alderwoman Howard, do you wanna wrap it up, or you wanna?
No, I just would like to wrap it up and move forward with this resolution number six.
All right.
Adapt it.
All right. I wanna thank all of the speakers who came to speak on this resolution and to tell us their stories. It is, really means a lot to me and other members of the board, and I'm trying to get to my section here. And for members of the board who have not participated online like this before, there is a, at the very bottom of your screen, you have a raise hand if you would like to speak on this resolution. I'm opening it up to any, anyone from the board, while we move forward to the next resolution. Any speakers? All right.
President Reed?
Yes.
This is Alderman Stevens. I would note that I actually do not have a raise hand function. I'm working off of my Chromebook and not my government laptop.
Oh, okay. I don't know, I don't know where it would be on the Chromebook, but if you open up the participants panel, you may be able to do it from there, but if not, but go ahead, Alderman from the twelve.
Yes, and then point of, point of question, I suppose. Am I able to request that the Alderwoman from the fourteenth yield for questions, or is this just a discussion period?
This is, you can do that. It's unusual to do it on a courtesy resolution, but you have a right to do that if you have a question from her.
Would the Alderwoman from the fourteenth be remiss, or rather be?
Yield for questions. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, will you have questions to the Alderman from the twelfth?
Sure.
Alderman from the twelfth, please proceed.
Thank you. And I like the little note about the Chromebook implementation being very limited. I do agree. So thank you, STLT. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, I want to thank you first and foremost for raising, raising this resolution and raising a sense of patriotism. As someone who is, has before pursuing public office, gone for the Foreign Service as a diplomat for our State Department, sort of throwing themselves into that process, I do appreciate it. However, I do hold some reservations getting the historical background of Loyalty Day. And I wanted to ask whether or not you were aware of the original sort of function of the Loyalty Day, or its sort of origination?
Yes, I mean, I grew up in the fifties, so yes, I am very aware of that.
Oh, my goodness, Alderwoman, you betray your age. You're not a day over thirty-seven.
Right.
I mean, it's just that good South City air and neighborhood is what keeps.
It is, and good genes.
And well, I can't speak to that, but... So I do take some issue with, with that, in understanding, of course, that, you know, that is back in the Eisenhower administration. We're now in the Biden administration, since time has passed. Are you planning to support legislation or present legislation that would otherwise support our veterans outside of this resolution, perhaps Veterans Affairs, or seeking opportunities to better support veteran care and aid?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Furthermore, are you willing to, I'm very appreciative of having an LGBT voice regarding this resolution. So my first, to Dr., oh, I do apologize, Dr. Torres, yes, for providing that. Every day, as we all know, thousands of Americans are born, come home yet. Are you planning to support legislation that would otherwise support the LGBT community, be they veterans or not, here in St. Louis?
I sure would, and I have.
Excellent. Well, I can only speak to this legislative session. Furthermore, last question, I promise, do you plan to present or support legislation that supports our immigrants, of course, having many in South City and having such a diverse background? Sorry, I didn't catch you off there, did I?
Um, yes, I do. I'm sorry. No, you didn't cut me off. I didn't know, I didn't know if I was, if you were finished.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, the, the video lagged a bit. So that was a yes to supporting or presenting veteran legislation. That was a yes to supporting or presenting LGBT community supportive legislation. Is it a yes to supporting or presenting immigrant-related legislation in this legislative session?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent. I appreciate it. Thank you, Alderwoman.
Okay, thank you for your questions.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to spend too much time on this and belabor what I think is a huge waste of our time here at the board. This is the second time we've had something like this introduced by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth. Loyalty Day is problematic for a large number of people within our community. It was designed to supplant Workers' Day. And so I'm happy that the Alderwoman from the fifteenth ward is moving forward and making sure that we are recognizing that as, as the important day that it is. My other concern, and then I'll let everyone else speak, is that one of the events that people are being invited to for Loyalty Day here in the City of St. Louis is being hosted at the business of somebody who showed up to Washington, DC, and we know at least made it to the Capitol steps on January sixth during the insurrection. And so I think that alone should make us all very wary of what Loyalty Day is actually meaning to some of the people who are moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. One of the things that, that, first of all, I'm gonna thank Alderwoman Howard, because where we are in our country is not recognizing that some people experience different things from others, and their lives are are disrupted or not allowed to thrive as much as possible. After hearing the story of the doctor, and I look at the things that have occurred here in the United States in the past fifty years towards other human beings and who they are and what they try to achieve, the simple things even. And to hear him say how much he is appreciative of being in a country that allows you to be yourself. Before we go too far in the, in our process to not recognize others, as we have done in the past, of insulting people in their history, we should think twice and give, give credence to what has occurred to others and how we can move forward together. There's not much else you can do but to respect people. Give them the opportunity to love. Give them the opportunity to exist with a decent quality of life. But this body is not the place to disrespect. I think when you look into the archives of resolutions and legislation that's been passed in order to give people their rights over the years, and most especially the last five years, I think this board has been in a place, in the right place to do that. And as some will have the opportunity to research and learn about all that is already in place, you will feel better about who we are and what we represent. You will feel better about who we are and what we represent thus far. But I won't be negative. I won't have any harsh feelings about how something was started over 50 years ago. Because that's where they were then. And we have truly evolved since then. And if there is an individual that we don't like or we believe has done something that is absolutely positively egregious to our country. Then we call them out and we don't participate. But please respect those who have had a terrible existence in other times and other places. And welcome them and thank them for choosing the United States of America. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, usually as I see consent resolutions, they are consent. We pass and move it along. So I was trying not to say this, but I would object to this being on the consent calendar and ask that it be moved to the regular regular resolution if we're going to have long-term comments on it because that's usually not what we do. So I'm objecting before we vote that it be, remain on the consent calendar.
President Reed, you're currently muted, sir.
You have the right to move it to the regular resolutions calendar at your request. So, so you're asking that resolution number six be placed on the regular resolutions calendar?
I am. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Point of order.
Alderman from the 22nd, please state your point of order.
Mr. President, just for clarity, I thought we had taken a vote already on the calendar. So we just put it before us?
Well, we took a vote on the courtesy. We didn't take a vote. We did a motion and second on the courtesy resolutions calendar. So, you know, the final vote would be amending that original motion and second. Removing item six.
Okay. Thank you.
Item six from it.
Thanks for the clarity.
All right. But anyone at any given, just so that everyone knows, anyone at any given time could request that something be moved from a courtesy calendar to a regular calendar. And this is a simple request from any member of the board. Because things on the courtesy calendars are generally held for things that are that do not require a lot of debate. Although some courtesy resolutions, which is a little bit different. Some courtesy resolutions have had some debate in the past. But, but it is up to any Alderman to request that something be moved to a regular calendar. So Madam Clark, please make noted that place resolution number, Alderman, Alderwoman from the 14th.
So are we going to vote on whether it needs to be moved?
No, it's a, a, a move from a, from a courtesy calendar, calendar to a regular calendar is a simple request from any member of the board. So any member of the board at any given time could ask that something be moved from a a regular calendar to a courtesy calendar to a regular calendar. So the Alderman from the first has requested that this courtesy resolution be moved to the regular resolutions calendar.
I would like to reiterate what the Alderwoman from the 19th said. It's a sad day that we disrespect people and, and don't have any respect for their experiences and, and just can't move, agree on this and move it along.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the first, do you still stick with your original request that this courtesy resolution be moved to the regular resolutions calendar?
I do, where we can talk about it. And still, there's nobody disrespecting it. I was trying to be quiet, but we're getting into a long debate. And at that point, it belongs on the first reading of resolutions, not the consent calendar. Thank you.
Madam Clark, please make noted that place resolution. Well, before we, before we do that, we have Alderwoman from the 14th. Do you have any additional speakers? Because on, once we move to the regular resolutions calendar from this courtesy resolutions calendar, there isn't any room for speakers on that. So do you have additional speakers that you'd like to recognize?
Not at this time.
I saw that Kim McGrath, I don't know if you know that she's online. She was one of the originators of this. I don't know if you saw her, but she's online and looked like she was.
I guess would she like to raise her? Would, Kim, would you like to speak?
Point of order.
Yeah. Alderwoman, please state your point of order.
Once we, I've made a motion to move it to the calendar, it moves and then all debate and everything stops. So she cannot now speak to it because I've done that. I tried to let this go on. So point of order, it is the end. It has to be moved. It is a non-debatable request. And so there should not be any more conversation.
Well, Alderwoman, it's a, it's a, as you stated, it's a request to move it from one agenda.
No, it actually is more than a request. If you will look at our rules, once anybody asks, and so my point of order is that there should not be any more conversation. Now, they can suspend the rules and ask that we have conversation in the first reading. You don't have to be prevented from speaking on a resolution in the first. You just asked to suspend the rules.
No, Alderwoman, once it moves to the regular resolutions calendar.
I understand.
There is no room for public to speak in the regular resolution.
I agree. And there's no room for public to speak. I've asked it to be removed because you, you remove it and that's the end of debate.
All right. I got that. I got that. But, but at this, at the same time, if we have speakers who have taken out their time under this courtesy calendar, who had no idea that it would be moved. You know, you know, the, the minute that, that it would take for them to, you know, be recognized as something that I think would be detrimental to this board. But once we move to the regular resolutions calendar, the debate would be just amongst the members of the board of Alderman. But.
Mr. President, so what I'm saying, excuse me, having you.
I understand.
Okay, Mr. President. What you're saying is that they had no idea. That's the responsibility of the person who sponsors this resolution to bring them up on the rules. At any point, I could have said this immediately soon as she did it, and I tried not to. But then to continue to go on once I've asked it to be put on the regular rules, is a violation of our rules. Okay?
Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the, from the first. As I said, the resolution is now moved to the regular resolutions calendar. And we will go to the regular resolutions calendar after we complete this, the courtesy resolutions. But we do have, and it, look, I don't even know if Kim is still here. I don't even see her.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Kim, if you just want to say hi to everyone just real quickly before we move on.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. Thank you, President Reed. Thank you for, Alderwoman Howard, for the resolution to the, to the full board. Yeah, I was, you know, participating in the call today with interest. I live in the 8th ward of the city of St. Louis. Serving different capacities in the neighborhood. I've served as Democratic Committee Woman. And most recently as Director of the Victims of Communism Memorial Foundation, which is a nonprofit human rights organization enacted into law unanimously by Congress and signed into law by Bill Clinton in 1993. We have the first ever commission here in the city of St. Louis. So myself and many of the volunteers
Point of order.
are on the call, have spoken. So I understand that, oh, go ahead.
No.
Point of order.
Alder, Alderwoman, I just, Kim, I just wanted you to real quickly say hi so that we didn't want to. We tried to under this courtesy resolution calendar, they give the public who are, who are being recognized with resolutions and stuff, an opportunity just to, you know, say hi to the board or whatever. So, so thank you for your time and thank you for doing the work that you're doing. All right. All right. Resolution number eight. Alder, Alderwoman Boyd.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was trying to contact the people that were here, and this will be short and to the point. We lost a pioneer within our community, Mr. Halber Sullivan on last week, and we presented him with a resolution from the Board of Aldermen at the, at his services. And I wanted to take the time to recognize the staff of guarantee say something else, family father support organization. And we have Mr. Charles Barnes here that is, that worked with Mr. Pay, I mean, I'm sorry, let me slow down. That worked with Mr. Sullivan and myself. And we have worked for, we have worked for quite a bit of years together in regard. And so I just wanted to take the time to recognize the staff that plays a big role in our community in supporting the fathers. Because Halber saw something that I think a lot of people have forgotten. That the fathers play a critical role in our families. And they did not have direction to improve their lifestyles to help the people in their families. So at this time, I would like the board to accept the resolution from Mr. Halber Sullivan. Thank Mr. Charles Barnes. Alderwoman Shemene Clark Hubbard. She has two guests that we, she has invited also to be recognized to accept the resolution for Mr. Halber Sullivan.
Hey, do Alderwoman Boyd or Alderwoman Hubbard, would you like to, Alderwoman Hubbard, would you like to speak first and then you all call your guest up to speak?
Oh, oh, sure. I just want to thank you all again for your support on this resolution. For Father Family Support Center, we know the work that they've been doing on the ground and we know that it will continue to be done because of the legacy that Mr. Sullivan laid and the foundation that he supported for this community. It's been amazing. It's been unmatched. And we wanted to make sure that we acknowledged and showed our support, continued support for Fathers Family Support Center. And that's why we invited them on the call today. So first we'll have a speaking Mrs. Sherri Tillis.
Good morning, and thank you so much for inviting us today. I just would like to say that it's a pleasure to know that the work of Mr. Halber Sullivan is being honored by this board of whom he respects so greatly. I would also like it known that the organization has served over 17,000 fathers, which has impacted over 45,000 children within the St. Louis community. In just the last year, 279 participants that came through our family formation program obtained employment, which resulted in $7 million being returned to the local economy. The organization has been established, of course, to improve the outcomes of children. But as you all know, it's improved the outcome of those fathers and mothers who have also been able to participate in our programming. So on behalf of the staff 52 strong, we would like to just thank you all for this resolution today and let you all know that we are committed to honoring the legacy of Mr. Halber Sullivan by continuing in his mission that he left to us as a gift to improve the lives of children in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, would you like to say something?
Well, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Boyd, and thank you, President Reed, for this opportunity. As I concur with what Ms. Tillis has stated, Mr. Sullivan back in 1997 in the incorporation of the Father Support Center. And now the Fathers and Family Support Center had tremendous mission, and that was to change the life of a child. And he wanted to empower the parents in order to do that. And with his legacy, he did exactly what he set out to do. We have changed the lives of children. We've strengthened the families, and now we're impacting communities. He has taken this thing from a small idea to a worldwide entity. We're not just locally, locally known. We're nationally known as well. Mr. Sullivan was one of the leaders in fatherhood across the country, where many came to get his expertise on the responsible fatherhood tools to make families what they are supposed to be. So we are greatly honored by you guys taking this time and recognize, recognizing the work that he has done. As Ms. Tillis stated, we will continue this work, working with not only in the community, but expanding his knowledge across the country as we have done in the past. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President.
All right. Thank you. And we have some members of the board, Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd ask that my name be added to the resolution.
Madam Clark, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 14th.
Yes, first off, I would like my name added also, and I, I really would like to express my sympathy for your loss. And the, the things that Mr. Halbert has established in our city have been, you know, top of the line. And I think that, you know, when we look at what's going on in our city with crime and, and, and some of the things that are happening, I think that we need to think about expanding these kinds of services to the youth of our city. And, and maybe adding to this because I think, you know, having a good home precludes a lot of the misbehavior we're seeing in our, our city. So I admire the work you do and I hope it continues and expands in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd also really like my name to be added to this resolution. I'm so lost. And again, thank you so much for all you all are doing for the community.
All right. Madam Clark, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 26th, I see your hand raised. Was that from before? Alderwoman from the 26th, I think that was.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It wasn't from before. I just wanted, but I was going to ask. I did want to let my colleagues speak first because I was going to say a few things in closing and I, while, while I have the mic though, I would like to ask then if it, with permission, if we can pass this resolution and move to that.
Move by Alderwoman from the 26th and second by Alderwoman from the fourth and a whole host of other people. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clark, please make note of that. Prepare another copy of this resolution and bank. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I was going to say, I did want to leave before we close. I have to, I would be remiss without mentioning Brother Reggie Slaughter, Reginald Slaughter, who is, I know a lot of us have community events that Fathers and Family Support Center come out, bring the resources and talk to our communities. And Brother Reginald Slaughter is always the man that's at the table, sitting there talking, engaging with the community. So I again did not want to share some love with him as the, as well as the rest of the 52 now. I didn't know the 52 members of the staff. I would encourage you as my colleagues to go visit their new campus on Olive. They're doing some amazing work. And thank you all for the support this morning. And thank you, Alderwoman Boyd, for bringing this resolution forward.
Yeah. I want to also just add my thanks and appreciation for the work that Halbert has done over the years. You know, my wife worked for him. She just spoke so highly of him all the time. And he, he was one of one, right? His personality is, is way to break through the status quo and get people's attention about this issue and get them to visualize the, the challenges in a much different way. And get them to understand that just because. And get them to understand that just because, uh, some of these men have made mistakes in the past, doesn't mean that that's all that they are, all that they will be. And inspire them to go on to do great things. I mean, he was just amazing and St. Louis was made better because of his involvement. Uh, I think his work and his teachings will live on, uh, far beyond our years. Uh, because he left that kind of mark on the city of St. Louis. So I thank him for all that he, that he, he has done, uh, you know, in his time here in St. Louis. And, uh, to his family, I'm just so gracious that, um, that he gave so freely of his time and, and commitment to the city. It was shown in everything that he did. And that, that campus that he has now established over on Olive, that is just amazing. So folks who have not got an opportunity to see it, please go out there and see it. And, uh, to the people who are, are still involved in the Files Support Network and, and Center and, uh, to the staff, thank you for all that you do. Uh, this resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of that person's, uh, many, uh, accomplishments up until that point in time. And we add that to the permanent records of the city of St. Louis. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when people come back and research the records of the city of St. Louis, they will read amongst those records, missed it, Mr. Halbert Sullivan and know that he passed his way. And he committed so much so that on this day, we pause in our deliberations to assure that his, his records were permanently archived within the city's records and that he was properly recognized. So, uh, thanks to all who brought this resolution forward. Thanks to all who have, uh, worked alongside Mr. Sullivan for all those years. And thanks for the work that you're gonna do in the future. Uh, with that, um, I'll recognize any of the, uh, uh, sponsors, Alderman from twenty-seventh or twenty-sixth, if you have any for, uh, closing comments before we move on.
This, I also want to thank, uh, Father Support. And I keep hearing people saying the work that they did. But truthfully, I think I worked for Father Support. Cause all the times that Halbert and Charles and I met and we were getting guys out there, getting them to do the work that needed to be done and educate them. And so on my, in my real life, on my job, we even had a program there that they were bringing guys to my job and we were working with them, teaching them how to, uh, adapt to society and do the work. Because we could get them the jobs, we were just teaching them how to keep the jobs. And so I thank Charles and Halber because they helped me a lot. They invited me to speak to classes, to empower and encourage those young men to let them know that they were important to us and they played an instrumental role in our s- community. So thank you so much.
Right, thank you. It's been, uh, moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. That resolutions calendar has been amended to include items, resolutions number eight, ten, eleven, and thirteen. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Oppose.
The President.
Yep, we.
I would like to move resolution.
Hold on for a second, Alderman from the fourteenth, uh, we just finished the courtesy resolutions calendar. And due to the adjustment in the calendars, we'll take up our, the first reading of resolutions. Um, first reading of resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Resolution, are we going with six or we gonna go in order and put six at the end?
It'll be five, six, seven, nine, ten.
Resolution five, sponsored by Alderman Calder, special, Sularay Special Business District, twenty-twenty-one budget.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognized on the first reading of resolution number five.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Request unanimous consent in resolution five.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Um, this resolution require, is required by the, uh, adopting ordinance for the Sularay Special Business District, which is a local taxing district, uh, that helps with safety initiatives in the Sularay neighborhood. Uh, they've submitted their annual budget. I've reviewed it and discussed it with board members and approve of it and, uh, would move to adopt resolution five.
The move by Alderman from the seventh.
I'll second it.
Second about from the twenty-third, any discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth, you have your hand up. Is there any discussion on resolution number five?
No.
Okay.
I did have a question before we moved on and, and you didn't recognize me.
Oh, about what? The courtesy resolutions count?
Yes.
Okay, let me take this vote and we'll, I'll, I'll come to, uh, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the fourteenth, uh, sorry, I missed you on the courtesy resolutions calendar.
I re-
Uh, you're, you're muted.
I requested that resolution thirteen be moved to the regular resolution calendar also.
Oh, oh, man, I missed it. And
Thank you.
Point of order.
Please state your point of order.
Didn't we already approve the courtesy resolution calendar? We can't go back and undo that at.
Yeah, but the only way we can go back and redo that is if we, uh, move to reconsider the previous vote and then go back. And then we can move it, uh, from that, uh, courtesy resolutions calendar, um, all along from the fourteenth.
I moved reconsider the vote.
I, to reconsider, you have to have voted on the, on the prevailing side. Um, I think yours was a no vote. I know, right? So anyone that.
I'll move to reconsider.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we reconsider the, the vote on the courtesy resolutions calendar. Entertain a second on that.
I'll second.
Uh, so twenty-third. Uh, second about all from twenty-second. Any discussion? Alderman from the first.
I'd request a roll call, please.
Okay, uh, it's been moved and seconded that we reconsider the vote on the courtesy resolutions calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Hi.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Evans? Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia?
No.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Stevens?
No.
Alderman Switzer?
No.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Peel?
No.
Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Navarro? President Reed? President Reed?
Uh.
Um, Alderman Bosley? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Cone? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro? Thirteen, aye votes and eleven no votes.
Aye, vote, please stand the motion of the Alderman from, Alderman from the twenty-third, so.
Point of order.
Alderman, please state your point of order.
I was trying to do this back when you thought I was still continuing, uh, about, uh, courtesy resolution. It is my understanding that in order to vote, um, on a Zoom meeting, your actual face, not your picture, has to be shown. Um, so in that case, the people such as Alderman Collins, Mohammeds cannot vote. And I think we should give him a chance to come on board so he can vote. But he cannot vote with, 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 uh, a picture. He has to vote with his face. He has, we have to be physically present on a Zoom meeting.
All right, uh, Alderman, we will, we, 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 the vote has been called on, on that issue. So that vote has been called.
He still cannot, uh, he cannot vote and he, I've been trying to tell you this before. All, you, we cannot vote if there is not a person. That's like voting off of the floor.
Alderman, we, we, um, we.
The vote can be called all, it is not, it's not final. He cannot vote off of the committee. Fine, you can do it, it's still incorrect.
That, that, that vote is final. People, uh, have, anyway, anyway.
When would you bring, Mr. President, when would you then bring it up? If you don't bring it up, I, I can't bring it up in the middle of the vote. He can come and leave.
Yeah, you can.
So this is the appropriate.
You're just.
The appropriate time to bring it up is, my hand was up immediately afterwards. The appropriate time to bring it up is when this had been done. Now he's here. I think he should be given a chance. I didn't say he shouldn't be voted. I just said his face was not and he was not present. That was what I said. Here he is, now let him vote.
He's already voted.
No, he did not. He was not present.
Alderman, he was present. He already voted.
He did not. He was not his picture. When you look at this, you're gonna see that his picture was up there. And I am only trying to make sure that we follow our rules.
You know, we're doing, dealing with a courtesy resolution, right?
I understand it. And I'm not even trying to stop it.
Alderman from fourteen.
Mr. President, are we gonna, so are we go-
Alderman from the fourteenth, you recognize.
I have nothing.
No, what, wait a minute. You had to come back to this calendar.
Oh, okay, yes, I would, I would like to move a resolution thirteen to the count, of the regular calendar.
Uh, please, Madam Clerk, please place reg- resolution, courtesy resolution thirteen on the regular. Resolutions calendar, Alderman from the twenty-second, you had something. Uh, you're, you're muted, Alderman from twenty-second.
I don't want to belabor, but for the benefit of the new Alder people, um, cause I'm confused as to the rules as far as the Zoom and the voting. Did we vote on some rules to govern ourselves or was there a city councilor opinion? I mean, just to help.
Alderman, we'll, we'll get, we'll get, get into all that. Do, do you have anything for the courtesy resolutions calendar?
Well, what I do want to say for the courtesy resolution calendar, um, Mr. President, is that we need to really think about when we bring guests, uh, before us to speak and then a resolution have to be sent over to the formal resolution calendar. That is totally unfair to people who have brought guests to speak. So I want us to be mindful of that in the future. I just wanted to bring that up because that is not fair to people to time out their day to come and speak on what we all perceive to be a courtesy resolution that end up being a, a more formal resolution. So I just wanted to bring that awareness out. Thank you.
All right, so item number, uh, thirteen, Madam Clerk, please place item number thirteen on the regular resolutions calendar. Um, it's been, uh, now I'll entertain a motion to adopt the courtesy resolutions calendar as amended. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Did I have my hand up?
No, I'm recognizing you to make the motion on the courtesy resolutions calendar as.
I'll, I'll make that motion that we adopt the courtesy resolution calendar as amended.
Thank you.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second about Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar as amended. So now we're looking at items, um, number eight, ten, and eleven. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Takes us back to our regular, uh, resolutions, first reading resolution calendar, item number six. Madam Clerk.
Resolution six, sponsored by Alderman Howard, honoring National Loyalty Day.
Uh, Alderman from the fourteenth, you recognized on the first reading of resolution number six.
This resolution just honors the Loyalty Day and, um, those organizations sponsoring activities.
All right, would you like?
I think we, I'd like to move that we pass this resolution.
Well, would you like, yeah, uh, first reading of resolutions, would you like to request unanimous consent?
I'd requ- like to request consent, unanimous consent.
Objection.
There was an objection to unanimous consent. So, uh, you can choose to suspend the rules or, uh, send it to, uh, committee. You can send it.
I'd like to suspend the rules and vote on it.
Okay, it's, uh, would you like to make a motion this is?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
All right, takes the two-thirds majority. Uh, it's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth that we suspend the rules for the purposes of, uh, send a resolution for voting out resolution number six today. I entertain a second on that motion.
I'll, I'll make that second.
Second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? Alderman from the six, I mean, from the first, excuse me.
Just want to make sure that we do a roll call.
Okay. Alderman from the twelfth.
Uh, thank you, and, and you are correct. In the participants list, I can raise my hand. Um, is Alderman, uh, from the fourteenth had a speaker, uh, certain Miss Amy McGrath. Uh, I would like to motion that she be given a moment to speak since she did take time out of her day if she is still present.
Yeah, we can't, we, yeah, we can't, we cannot do that now. That's why I was trying to allow her to do that earlier when we had it on the courtesy, we cannot do it now.
Oh, I apologize. I have also reached out to Miss McGrath personally to, uh, to get a written testimony.
Oh, that'll be perfect.
Yeah, I do just want to re- assert my commitment from twelfth word that if a citizen takes time out of their day, regardless of how I feel about a bill, I, I want them to have a voice. So, um, you all, from the fourteenth, I apologize.
All right, thank you, Alderman from twelve. Um, Alderman from the eighteenth.
Um, first of all, uh, this loyalty bill, uh, I think it's, um, when we talk about socialism, I think the riches always had socialism. Whereas the working class had to fight from, at one time, you had to own property, men and women, black and white and everybody else in order to even vote. So, um, I think this is, uh, also going through slavery for black people. And, uh, we had no rights as a human being. We were chattel. I think, um, we were still loyal. I think, um, we were still loyal. I think, and I was born during the segregation period, born under segregation. Um, the country wasn't loyal to us. We fought all the wars. We followed all the rules. Uh, but still, we had, didn't have our citizenship, our rights to vote, our rights to go to school after we paid taxes, our rights to use certain facilities that we paid for most facilities. And our labor as slaves was social in that we created generational wealth for everybody except for ourselves. So, uh, but that was socialism for the whites. That was socialism for everybody but the African people in this country. So therefore, when we talk about social, economics is social. Because right now, uh, stimulus package, we, that money goes to everybody. We're, we're subsidizing businesses. We're subsidizing all kinds of people, rich people. Right now, we have socialism for the people who don't even grow food, people who grow tobacco, people who just, uh, people, we just subsidize people, the farmers who own the farms. We take taxpayers' money and we give it to the peoples not, uh, to subsidize, uh, themselves who don't, haven't worked a day in their lives, most of them. We also, um, subsidized the military industrial complex, wasting our money. That's social. We subsidized the prison industrial complex in that we lock up most of the poor and the working people. And then they work, some work for, don't work for anything, and others are working. But at the same time, a certain group is in jail right now, for example, for crack cocaine versus, um, powdered cocaine, whereas in the time is longer, so that is, and so we are subsidizing the rural areas. We are so, that's social, and that we are creating public works for rural people and have done it. And especially since the seventies, we have been doing it, and that is social. And that our tax dollar, right now in the city of St. Louis and the state of Missouri, we send Missouri most, we send the state most of the money from the St. Louis region, and we don't get but eighty percent, less than eighty percent return on our tax dollars. That is social. Somebody is getting that money. All social means is that a group of people working together, and they talk about communism. I'm a Christian. I have communal. I have communion. When I have communion on, uh, that's a, so a lot of words we use to red bait, a lot of words that we use to take away democratic rights, like the Communist Party and other parties were raided in the fifties by the Palmer race. That was undemocratic, and that the Constitution give you the right to peacefully assemble. The Black Council Party, hundreds of Black Council were assassinated, uh, where people had the right to peacefully assemble, and they were denied those rights. So when we talk about loyalty, it is the government itself that is, uh, is not the citizen. We shouldn't even have a civil rights movement. There shouldn't have been a Black Council Party. There shouldn't have been anything because our constitutional rights were taken away. And, and, uh, when we were given, when men were given the right, black men were given the right to vote in eighteen sixty-five, there shouldn't have had to be another right. And when women were given the right to vote in about nineteen, eighteen to nineteen, there shouldn't have been a right, you shouldn't have had a second right. So it's not about loyalty. It's about the government itself that has betrayed the law, betrayed the citizens and gone over throughout the world, taking resources from poor, mostly people of color. And now still, many of the people are not allowed to vote. And we talk about loyalty, we talk about democracy, but black people have fought in every war since we've been over in this country. So I don't know of anyone, I must, who has been more loyal than the working people, all working people, and especially black people who work for free for more than two hundred and fifty years in this country and got, didn't get a dime. Then, under segregation, we was last hired and the first fired. And so I don't know, uh, we should be having African-American loyalty today, and this country should pay us our reparations that is due us so that we can have some generational wealth so that we can reinvest in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I saw on the calendar today that we were gonna have some conflicting resolutions, and I was hoping it wasn't gonna turn into a, you know, kind of a, an hour affair on the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar, but here we are. Uh, so I, I heard from some of my constituency, particularly folks in the labor movement, uh, that had an issue with this particular resolution in front of us. And the issue wasn't anyone having loyalty to the United States or celebrating the United States, celebrating their loyalty to the United States. I think we all know, uh, if, if you did a Venn diagram of folks in, in labor and folks who have served the country, uh, there'd be a pretty big, uh, spot in the middle there. Uh, but instead, their issue was with, uh, the history of this particular, uh, day and the, the attempt to paper over, uh, May Day and the Haymarket Affair, uh, which happened in Chicago, which literally led to the eight-hour workday. Uh, thi- this came into, uh, kind of the, the common, uh, it, it came into being this day at the height of the Red Scare, uh, fifty years ago, uh, more than fifty years ago. You know, I think that this, this particular, uh, resolution is probably about fifty years too late. Um, uh, given the fact that there's just so much pushback to this, I'm gonna be a present to vote. Uh, that being said, uh, you know, I think that we can all agree that Red Dawn is an awesome movie, and if the Soviets come over the top, that we need to do something about it. But, uh, you know, I think that we're, I don't know why we're still arguing about this. I, I would really like to move on. Uh, so I'll be present. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further, uh, Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I want to, I want to speak on this particularly because I've, I've had interaction, um, with Dr. Torres. Personally, he and I have had great discussion. Um, I'm grateful for folks coming to speak in front of the board whenever they are invited to do so. Um, I, you know, I, I sent a link around. I, I was not aware of the history of Loyalty Day. I was not aware that Loyalty Day was a, uh, was an event, um, in the United States until this resolution was brought forward. And in my research, I grew more and more concerned. Um, I, you know, was raised in Middle America. I was raised in rural America. And, you know, the things that I was taught through our education system are things that I've continued to question and continue to get upset about the ways that, frankly, white, um, white America was uplifted in my education. Um, and being able to come back and critique my country for that, to be able to critique my country for the ways that we have erased people, the ways that we have been taught, um, that, that happened, that didn't actually happen. Um, and so I, I get, I get frustrated when we, when we require loyalty to something because that can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. We aren't demanding that, you know, that, uh, we, we don't have mandatory marches, um, in the United States. That's not something that, that we do. Um, I, I highly doubt that that is something that we would ever see, um, come to pass here in the United States. Um, but what we do have is, you know, multi-ethnic, um, multiracial coalitions that are working for the working people. And a lot of that is because of the labor movement, um, is because of labor unions and the ways that they have organized. And there are some times that those have been incredibly problematic that have also been white supremacist. And so we have to, to say those things too, and labor unions now are working to correct some of those mistakes as well. Um, but when we, you know, currently in the Missouri Legislature, we're seeing bills, um, that prevent protest that would, um, indemnify drivers from driving through lines of protest of people who are in the streets, um, would further criminalize people from blocking the streets, um, things that happen all the time here in the city of St. Louis, and when people are speaking out for their rights. And we're also seeing a ban on, frankly, racially correct education, um, that, that is coming through. Um, folks trying to say that the only, the only history that we're allowed to teach to our children is the, the white-centered history that we have always been taught. And I think that there's, there's a move now throughout the country to be more accurate, to be more honest about who we are and how we've gotten here. Um, and so I think, for me especially, in light of those things, in light of where we are as a country, this gives me great pause. Um, and it is not because I don't welcome the foreigner. I don't welcome the immigrants. I am an immigration attorney. I have personally helped numerous citizens get their citizenship, and I am, I'm thrilled by it. Um, and, but that diversity, the diversity of thought, that diversity of opinion, um, and an ability to criticize, right? Even new immigrants to the United States are welcome to criticize us. Um, and it, it, this just, this rings as problematic in a time when we are more and more polarized, when we are more and more separated into camps, and to declare loyalty to something, um, through a day that, I, frankly, the Red Scare upended people's lives. So people who were not communists, people who were not a part of the Communist Party were called out as communists. Their, um, their lives, their livelihoods, their homes were threatened. Um, and so just to be honest about where this comes from, um, there are, there are other ways that we can celebrate our unity, that we can celebrate our diversity, celebrate our culture, um, and this frankly just is, is not one of them. Um, so I, I thank everyone for coming to speak today. Um, I, I, I can't vote in support of this resolution.
Um, and I want to remind everyone before we go further, the motion that's before us is a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of taking this resolution up. Um, I didn't stop the first couple speakers because they were well into the thing. I was hoping that they would ended with why, uh, they would vote, uh, to suspend or not to suspend. But, um, after we take a vote to suspend the rules or not, if that is upheld, uh, then we will go to the debate on the resolution itself. Uh, so with that as, um, understanding, let's move forward. Anyone who would like to make any comments on the suspension of the ru- rules? Uh, and I have, Alderman from the fourteenth has her hand up.
Uh, that's all I was gonna do is just say we were talking about suspending the rules, not about the, the, um,
Bill.
Bill itself, or the.
The resolution. It feels like a bill.
Well, I'll tell you. I really, you know, I just, yeah, I, I just.
Anyway, uh, so any further discussion on suspension of the rules? All right, no further discussion on suspension of rules. Uh, it's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-third that we spend the rules for the purposes of taking resolution number six up. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
No.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderman Negacia.
No.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
No.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderman Switzer.
No.
Alderman Howard.
Yes, aye.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Altenberg. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Peel.
No.
Alderman Ty.
No.
Alderman Da- Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Present.
Alderman Cone.
Aye, or no, sorry, no.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
May I vote aye?
Alderman Bo- Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
No.
Alderman Altenberg. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Navarro. Thirteen, I votes. Eleven, no votes, and two voted present.
I vote, you fail to sustain the motion of the Alderman from the fourteenth. Um, Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution number six to the Rules, Credentials, and Resolutions Committee.
So noted. Resolution seven, sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed. Resolution of intention to establish O'Fallon Penrose Special Business District.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognized on the first reading of Resolution number seven.
Thank you, President. Uh, I request that Resolution number seven be sent to the Ways and Means Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh that we send Resolution number seven to.
Second.
Excuse me, Alderman from the twenty-first that we send Resolution number seven to Ways and Means. But, and second about Alderman from the twenty-second, I believe.
Yes.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution number seven to Ways and Means.
So noted. Resolution nine, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and Alderman Vaquero. Crime Prevention Program Fund.
Alderman from the, uh, twenty-second, you recognized on the first reading of Resolution number nine.
Mr. President, I move to, um, send Resolution number nine to the Public Safety Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman. It's been, been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-seventh, I believe. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries.
Resolution twelve, sponsored by Alderman Calder, recommending that the city of St. Louis Port Authority provide personal property tax abatement and sales tax exemption on contru- on construction materials for RB St. Louis Arch LLC.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognized on the first reading of Resolution number twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member of the board, I'd request to have Resolution twelve sent to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh that we send Resolution twelve to HUD, to HUD. Attend a second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
Hold on for a second. Uh, somebody's popping in. Is that Alderman Cone?
It is.
Okay, uh, Alderman Cone, uh, please proceed.
Mr. President, uh, point of order. So this is, my understanding, uh, an item that deals with the Port Authority and incentives that are offered through the Port Authority now that the district has expanded. Typically, those matters go before transportation and commerce, you know? And my role as chair, I also am a official, ex-official member of the Port Authority itself. So why would this go to Ways and Means?
I think, uh, you would have to, you could, you'd have to, if you want to inquire of Alderman from the seventh, you're free to do that.
Sure, okay. Uh, well, the Alderman from the seventh yield for questioning.
Alderman from the seventh will yield a question to Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Why would this be referred to Ways and Means versus the Transportation and Commerce Committee? I believe my motion was to refer to the HUDs Committee, not Ways and Means. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Because, well, because, sorry. Can you hear me? Hello?
I think his video is frozen. I think his video is frozen, but please proceed, Alderman from the seventh.
Yeah, no, I, I requested to refer it to HUDs because it's, it's, well, yes, this was a Port Authority abatement. It's a, it's an abatement involving a downtown development. Traditionally downtown redevelopment bills go to the HUDs Committee. You know, if this was a lease on the port, as I think I've introduced some bills regarding leases through the Port Authority, those go to transportation and commerce. This has little to do with transportation, other than the fact that it went through the Port Authority. And we're being consistent with, I think, our expansion of the Port Authority, saying we bring these forward to the Board as resolutions, given the fact that it's a downtown redevelopment, I would request that it go to HUDs.
All right.
So is a.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you still have the floor.
Yeah, so, you know, I understand that matters pertaining to development, particularly items over a million dollars are generally referred over to the HUDs Committee. However, if something is being passed by the Port Authority and is being enabled by legislation underneath the auspices of the Port Authority, while it might not be a matter directly related to transit or, you know, operations or lease of the port, it does directly derive from the enabling functions of the Port Authority and therefore should be heard in the Transportation and Commerce Committee.
Is that a question to Alderman from the seventh, Alderman from twenty-fifth?
No, that's a statement on my part as Chair of the Committee. And I would ask for the Alderman from the seventh to reconsider his motion.
Would you like to inquire, Alderman from the seventh? I think that was the last inquiry from Alderman from twenty-fifth. The, the, would you like to respond to that?
I'm not sure there was a question in there, but I, no, I won't reconsider. I'd like, I would stand on my motion and request that it be sent to HUDs.
All right, all right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Would the Alderman from the seventh yield for just one question, I promise?
Oh, yeah. Alderman from the seventh, we yield the question to Alderman from the twelfth.
Yes.
All right, Alderman from the twelfth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, the board, and thank you, Alderman from the seventh. Alderman from the seventh, regardless of where it ends up in committee, would you and the subsequent committee chair be willing to do a financial analysis of the impact to our public schools of any tax abatements or tips from this project? That's my only concern.
Yes, the reason I'm asking it be sent to committee, I mean, there was a financial analysis. I'm asking for a vote on this today, I haven't requested unanimous consent. I'm treating this like you'd treat any other, you know, abatement done via resolution as we often do with enhanced enterprise zones and other functions, and sending it to committee, well, it'll be a full presentation by SLDC staff. The developer will speak and we'll have a healthy discussion and probably some public comment.
Excellent, I appreciate it, Alderman from the seventh. I do invoke my, my newbie status in this regard, so I apologize for the redundancy. I would like to be included on that or have any analysis, financial analysis sent to me if it is all the same to you and the Chair of HUDs. With that, I, I yield back, thank you.
Right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the seventh, second about Alderman from the twenty-second that we send resolution number, number twelve to HUDs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose.
No.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution number twelve to HUDs.
So noted, resolution thirteen sponsored by Alderwoman Green and the following all the persons. Rice, Norrion, Gunther, Peel, Switzer, Ngracia, Boyd, Middlebrook, Navarro, Stevens, Davis, Cone, Odenberg, Evans, Jeffrey Boyd, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Tyus. Recognizing May first as International Workers' Day and honoring the long history and contributions of the labor movement to St. Louis and the United States.
Alderwoman fifteenth, you recognize on the first reading, resolution thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Could the Clerk please read the resolution?
Madam Clerk, will you please read resolution number thirteen?
Resolution thirteen, whereas May Day, also known as International Workers' Day, has its roots in the United States and is now recognized, recognized in dozens of countries around the world as a day to honor and fight for the rights of workers. And whereas May first is also recognized as the feast day of St. Joseph, the worker and the patron saint of workers in the traditional of the Catholic Church. This feast day was first established in nineteen fifty-five by Pope Pius XII to draw attention to the dignity of labor. And whereas the significance of May Day to the labor movement began with the movement of four and eight-hour workday in Haymarket Square in Chicago, Illinois in eighteen eighty-six. The events of May first would later be known as the Haymarket Affair, an event which used brutal police repression against labor activists and, and in the end resulted in the state execution of eight labor activists. And whereas St. Louis has played a crucial part in the growth and development of the U.S. labor market stretching back to eighteen seventy-seven, St. Louis General Strike, which was built around multiracial solidarity. It is the birthplace of IBEW, which was founded here in eighteen ninety-one and the site of dramatic labor struggles, including the nineteen thirty-seven sit-down strike at Emerson Electric. Today organized labor in our city is working hard to restore the multiracial unity evidenced during the eighteen seventy-seven strike while building a labor, a labor movement that can meet the challenges of the twenty-first century. And whereas the right of the working people to come, to come together to organize and collectively bargain with their employers is a fundamental right recognized as such by U.S. international law. Specifically in two thousand eighteen, Missouri voters overwhelmingly struck down so-called right-to-work laws that infringe upon the rights of Missourians to collectively bargain. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has passed forty-seven, U.S. senators have co-sponsored to the Protecting Rights to Organize Act, the greatest expansion of workers' rights protection since the National Labor Relations Act of nineteen thirty-five. And whereas in the midst of the global pandemic, essential workers have put their life on the line to serve, feed, and care for citizens of, of St. Louis, and we owe them our gratitude for their crucial, I'm sorry, for their critical work. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize May first, twenty-twenty-one as International Workers' Day in the City of St. Louis. Celebrate the achievements of the labor movement, support the rights of workers to organize and direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at time and place deemed appropriate to the sponsor.
Alderman from the fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to request unanimous consent.
Second. Objection.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent, so you could choose to send it to committee.
I would like to request the suspension of the rules for the passage, for the purpose of passage, passage of resolution number thirteen.
Second.
Been moved by the, been moved by Alderwoman from the fifteenth, second by the Alderwoman from the first, that we spend the rules for the purposes of taking up resolution number thirteen today.
Mr. President, you have a hand raised, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
I, I, I know, I know, but we're still dealing with this. Alderman from the eighteenth, you have any discussion related to the suspension of the rules on resolution number thirteen?
No, I don't, I do not.
I mean, Alderman from the fifth, do you have any?
Mr. President, I would be honored to have my name added as a co-sponsor of resolution number thirteen.
Okay, we can, we can do that soon as we get through this, the suspension of the rules. But Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any, anything further on the suspension of rules? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page? Alderwoman Ngracia? Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?[1235.52]
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
No.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel.
Yes.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
I'm sorry, was that a aye Alderman?
Aye, yes, aye.
Alderman Narayan.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Present.
I'm sorry, President, how did he get you?
I'm unmuted. I said, present.
Okay. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Bosley is an aye.
Alderwoman Ngracia.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-two aye votes, one no vote, and two voted present.
Right, by your vote, you stand the motion of Alderman from the fifteenth. Alderman from the fifteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I won't belabor this today. I think it's a pretty simple resolution to honor a holiday that most countries around this world recognize and that the United States recognized as well up until the 1950s. And we are, we are a country that has a robust labor history. In fact, our own city has a very robust labor history dating back to the general strike of 1877, a strike that predated the Haymarket affair, which ushered in International Workers' Day. The general strike in St. Louis was a strike, if you're not aware, that, that brought together a multiracial coalition of workers that brought this city to a standstill, demanding an eight-hour workday, demanding good working conditions for, for workers throughout our city. And it scared the, the establishment class, the, the wealthy folks in our city. And they, they thought to, how do we distract from this multiracial coalition of workers that was forming in our city? And so what did they do? They formed the Veiled Prophet and the Veiled Prophet Ball. And we see the veil, the vestiges of that today. It would, it would be 10 years later that the Haymarket affair would happen. And many would say that what happened in St. Louis and the guts and the courage of those workers in St. Louis is what would eventually inspire the Haymarket affair and would inspire those workers that would then lead to this national and then international affair of workers who were rising up and saying, you know what? We are the ones that are producing goods throughout this, this world, and it is our labor that is producing these profits. And we deserve an eight-hour workday. We deserve working conditions that are not putting our lives on the line. And, and I think that that history is often erased in our country. And, and it's important for us to be remembering that and not erasing the, the work of these workers, not erasing the, the history and the legacy of unionization and the labor movement that has brought us up to today. I think that we are seeing a lot of pushback, a lot of red scare tactics that are happening today in our country as a result of the, the gains that are happening in the labor movement right now. We, we're on the precipice of perhaps passing the Pro Act, which would be the greatest expansion of the labor movement that our country has seen in my lifetime. And that is really exciting because workers in our country deserve that. We've had workers out in our streets demanding, you know, fight for, you know, livable wages in terms of the fight for 15. We've had janitors that have gone on strike and as, and as a result have, have won, you know, fair contracts as a result of those strikes. And we are seeing a growth in the labor movement for the first time in our country that, that we, that we have seen in genera, in a generation. And, and that is a really, really exciting place for us to be. And so I think it's important that we, we understand our history, we go back to our history, we recognize the, the roots of the labor movement and, and we recognize a holiday that other countries, other folks around the world recognize that actually started in the United States and, and pay attention to that because we have a lot of great organizing that is happening right now. And we have a lot of great work that is being done in the labor movement. And, and we have a lot of folks within our community that have put their lives on the line during this pandemic and, and have not been given the quality working conditions and the hazard pay that they really deserve. And so there's still a lot of work to be done within our labor movement. And I think that our, our local, our local labor leaders recognize that, they are working toward that. And we're really, we are at a place in our country where, where the labor movement is at that precipice. We, we have some great organizing that is happening. So I hope that we can pause today, recognize the accomplishments of the labor movement, recognize our history and, and, and move forward in recognizing these workers, recognizing the history of the labor movement and, and, and our support for further multiracial labor organizing that supports working-class people within our city and within our country.
Alderwoman from the eleventh. Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. You hear me?
Yes, yes, we got you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to add that my name be added to this and I appreciate the Alderwoman for bringing this forward and those labor organizing, the attempt to try to tie them in with some of the McCarthyism-type tactics. And I think it's important to have this discussion and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Madam Clark, please make note of that, add the Alderwoman from the eleventh's name to it. Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman, Alderman from the eighteenth, then Alderwoman from the first.
First of all, let me say I wholeheartedly support 100% all working people throughout the United States as well as throughout the world. And at the same time, I want to reemphasize that through, from slavery through segregation through the current time, African, black peoples and Africans throughout the world must always be included with working people because most of us have been workers and most of us are workers. So we need to make sure that we are workers because any working people or the working class that are left out will be used by those who are trying to take advantage of the other sector of the working class. So in order to have unity, we must honor all working people. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
President, members of the board, I'd also request that my name be placed on this resolution.
Madam Clark, please make note of that.
And also, International Workers' Day is, that, we need International Workers' Year. I think we found out how important many of the workers that we took for granted. But this pandemic is many people that we didn't give the credit, the grocery store workers, the janitors, the custodians, the teachers, the people who now have to teach their own children and then said, oh, my God, I don't know what to do. These are very important people. Workers are, are in fact important, unions are important. A lot of people don't know what labor has done, you know, they, they don't know about the many hours people used to have to work, the children used to have to work, so they take that for granted. Are unions perfect? No, they are not. No organization that you're in is perfect, but what you do is you work on making it a more perfect. That's why we talk about in our, a more perfect union for the United States. So not, we weren't talking about labor unions, but we continue to work and to add things and to make it a better place. When you see a problem with something, you work on that. There was much ado, and I didn't get to address it last, about the last resolution, a previous resolution that we had about people coming to testify. If you don't want your people to not be able to testify and you want to put it on a consent calendar, make sure you get 20 votes before you do that. Otherwise, put it on the regular calendar. Don't try to blame it on somebody else. Somebody quote, posted that I didn't want people to talk.
Point of order.
I do not, I do not want to stop people from talking. I want them to be able to talk.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth, please state your point of order.
This has nothing to do with the, the resolution that's under discussion.
Point of order, well taken. Alderwoman from the first, keep your comments germane to the.
But it was going to that, so I'm still going to go back to that point because I was not finished. I still want people to talk.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you, you, you have an opportunity to, to do that in open public after the meeting, but, but as you know, that, that, that subject matter isn't germane to this, we're.
You don't know what I'm going at it. I'm still, once.
But, but you're.
But it is not, I'm going to say right now.
You're all discussing a previous matter that was.
When you finish with it, I'm going to finish my point because it goes directly to this.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman.
You just want to try to quiet me, you're not.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman.
I hear you, Mr. President.
Alderwoman, but you, you. Alder, Alderwoman, look.
Look.
You know.
That is not, no, don't look.
Alderwoman, you know.
I, I hear your point and then I'm going to move on. So you just, you can keep arguing all you want to.
No, 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 but.
Yes, you are, don't look me either.
Alderwoman.
I don't tell you that, Mr. President. I'm all, not look, I'm not your child. Don't talk to me like your child. I am not your child, do not talk to me like your child.
Alderwoman, you know that that was not meant to be.
And I'm moving on and I'm still going to say what I'm going to say.
Please move on, but, but, but again.
You don't know, I'm finished with that and I'm moving on.
Okay, move on then.
But then you don't tell me, look, I'm not your child. Back to your children. I am a grown woman and I'm older than you, do not address me like that.
Alderwoman.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Please, Mr. President, please be respectful. I heard you.
I am being respectful, please continue.
I just mentioned that to get to my point.
Get to the point.
Thank you very much. That, and oftentimes, with unions, people have tried to quiet people down, keep them from speaking up. That's why you have unions, that's why you have labor movements, because people will use bullying tactics to try to make sure that people who oppose them or who want their workers' rights don't get a chance to have that. So that's why you need it, unions. And there's a lot of tactics that are used to do that kind of thing. And you try to give extra, other people extra rights while you take people, things away from other people. And that ought to be stopped on all levels, wherever you work at. That should not be at the Board of Aldermen, that should not be at the grocery store, that should not be anyplace. Everybody ought to have an equal opportunity to excel in this country. Now, again, laborers are very important and we have had that chance to uplift them in this last couple of years and acknowledge them. And I want to thank the sponsor of the resolution because I know you and I both know when people try to suppress you, that that just makes you rise more. And that's what has happened to workers all over the country for many years. And this is a very important resolution and I appreciate you passing it and not bringing people down here to speak when you didn't know if you were going to have them speak or not. And I have nothing else to say.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is a, a resolution and a conversation that's more than needed. I do give due respect to unions for all that we have accomplished. But in the back room of the union, we also are not providing equity for those who are willing and able to work. And I'm hoping that as we move forward and looking at the city of St. Louis, most especially, that we do more. I have had an opportunity to work with IBEW very closely. I respect them and what they stand for. As most of you all know, their museum where their first office was located is in the nineteenth ward. They invested a lot of money in it and have also worked very hard with me to get people into the union. But it's not just that one union. We got to make sure that it happens in all of them and most especially the city of St. Louis. As we are monitoring these developments, it would be wonderful if we started using the bill that we passed almost three years ago to make sure that we had equity for all levels, but it has not been implemented and it's way overdue. So let's look at everything and let's try to work towards equality for all because this opportunity is more than ample at this time. The majority of the people who currently live in the United States of America are over the age 50. Many of them are retiring from these positions. And it's very important that we organize and make sure that we get the young folks in these jobs so that they can have careers and a good quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Hearing now, Alderwoman from the fifteenth, you're recognized.
Just want to thank members of the board for, for your overwhelming support of this and for all, for everybody who has signed on as cosponsors of this. I wholeheartedly agree with the Alderwoman from the nineteenth ward. I think we have a tremendous opportunity in front of us to ensure equity in our unions, equity in organizing and, and for all of our workers. I, you know, I think that our labor unions recognize that. I think they recognize that they have not always been there and are seeing that as, as the goal and, and, and what they need to be working on and doing, moving forward. And so I'm very optimistic for our city, I'm very optimistic for our country in terms of what we can be doing to better support workers and working people. So thank you for your favorable consideration and with that, I'll close.
Alderwoman, you need to now make the motion to have it adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot that I didn't do that earlier. Motion to adopt Resolution 13.
But been moved and, and. Alderwoman from the eighth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of our reading resolution.
All right. Now, guess what? Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guests? Any introduction of our guests? Alderman from the twenty-third, let's get this meeting started.
Yes, as always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest.
Welcome, Greg, to this session of Board of Aldermen. Any further introduction of our guests, any further introduction of our guests? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, what day is it? April 30th still, isn't it? Yes.
Yes.
Is on this day that I was personally recorded jailhouse rock. More importantly, this is Arbor Day, so go out and hug a tree today and have some fun. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks for that. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated April 19th, 2021, and April 20th, 2021.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of minutes dated April.
Nineteenth and twentieth.
Thank you, nineteenth and twentieth.
Been moved by.
Twenty-third ward.
Been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city official can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line items seven through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Three sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance authorizing and directing the Circuit Attorney on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Office of Justice Programs for funding to create the St. Louis Circuit Attorney Navigation Diversion Opportunity Program 2019 ARBX KO 18 and authorizing the Circuit Attorney to expand related grant funds necessary to support this effort, including hiring staff and program development resources and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Four sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance authorizing and directing the Circuit Attorney on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Office of Justice Programs to fund innovative prosecution solutions for combat invited violent crime grant program 2019 YXBX 0021 and authorizing the Circuit Attorney to expand related grant funds necessary to support this effort containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Five sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed and ordinance repealing ordinance 71257 to establish O'Fallon-Penrose Special Business District pursuant to sections 71.790 through 71.808 of the revised statutes of Missouri containing severability effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill Six sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordinance amending section one, paragraph 17.62.160 of ordinance 62101 to permit city employees other than those designated permittees that are permitted to park free of charge within the area known as Washington Park to park free of charge within a parking garage located at 1515 Clark Avenue as provided herein. Board Bill Seven sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the 26th, 2021 for the 1558 South Van de Vanda Avenue area. Board Bill Eight sponsored by Alderman Vaquero and ordinance approving a blighted study and a redevelopment plan for the 3810 Watson Road redevelopment area. Board Bill Nine sponsored by Alderman Cone and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment making certain findings with respects, with respect to the transfer of $13,727,769 of excess monies that the City of St. Louis intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Ten sponsored by Alderwoman Martin and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the Block of Virginia Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the intersection of the Block of Virginia Avenue and Berry Boulevard. Board Bill Eleven sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance amending ordinance number 66935, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated January the 1st, 2026 as extended in 2010 and 2015 between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Material Sales Company, Inc., containing severability clause. Board Bill Twelve sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the Fourteenth Ward Liquor Control District as established herein for a period of three years from the effective date hereof containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirteen sponsored by Alderwoman Ngracia and ordinance authorizing the City of St. Louis Department of Health to accept a grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration known as Law Enforcement and Behavior, Behavior Health Partnership St. Louis Care Act Project Grant authorizing the expenditure of grant funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for the grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Fourteen sponsored by Alderwoman Ngracia and ordinance authorizing the Department of Health to accept COVID-19 response grant assistance upon the approval of estimate and apportionment through the epidemiology and laboratory capacity care award up to $71,150 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and to fulfill the obligations of said grants and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Fifteen sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Center Point Terminal Company for a period of 10 years with three five mutual containing severability clause. Board Bill Sixteen sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance amending ordinance number 68872, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated April 1st, 2011 to be extended in the first mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and KESU Company, a Missouri corporation containing a severability clause. Board Bill Seventeen sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Terminal Row Association of St. Louis, a Missouri corporation containing a severability clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD's Committee, Board Bill Two, to Public Safety, Board Bill Three, Four, and Twelve, to Ways and Means, Board Bill Five, to Public Employee, Board Bill Six, to Neighborhood Development, Board Bill Seven and Eight, to Transportation and Commerce, Board Bills Nine, Eleven, Fifteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill Ten, and to Health and Human Services, Board Bill Thirteen and Fourteen.
Dispense with line items thirteen through eighteen. Then line item twenty-one, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, May 7th, 2021, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. via webinar.
Any further announcement? Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, did we do special guests today? Did I somehow miss that?
Uh, yeah, I did, introduction of our guests, I did it right after. It was at the, you know, just a couple, few minutes ago. Did you have an honored guest?
Well, I did want to wish a former member of our board, today is April 30th, is Congressman William L. Clay Sr.'s birthday. He turned 90 years old today. He is a former member of the Board of Aldermen. I just wanted to ask all of you all, he represented the 26th ward, all of us, if we could just wish him a happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah, that's good.
Happy birthday. And Aldo, and it, Alderwoman Tyus, it wasn't your birthday recently?
I did not bring that up.
Happy birthday to Alderwoman from the first, too. Let's give her a big round of applause.
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. President, could I have one more moment if you would? I, I, at last, I wasn't at the last meeting because I've been sick for a week with a adverse reaction, but I was at the, I'll sign and die. And I made a misstatement. And if you would give me a point of personal privilege, I want to apologize because I made a statement that wasn't true and I do not like to put misinformation out about people. Mr. Anthony, I can't even remember his last name, I can't say his last name, but he was with Dismas House. I said he was the brother-in-law of Gary Best. That is not true and I want to apologize. The other stuff that I talked about, Dismas House, is all true, but that particular point was not correct. And I do not ever want to put misinformation out about people because I've had it done too many times for me and I am really sorry and I am writing him a letter to apologize also.
Right, thank you, Alderwoman, thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to just announce this weekend in the 26th ward, there's a cleanup. It's been rescheduled from last weekend by an organization called Black Men Build. This is a national organization, but this is our St. Louis chapter, Black Men Build. They will be having a community cleanup on Martin Luther King beginning at 1515 North Kings Highway, which is our beloved World Community Center. So if you're looking for something to do tomorrow morning, I think beginning at 8:00 a.m., Black Men Build is having a community cleanup on Martin Luther King. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-first. All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderman from twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to wish a happy birthday to the former Alderwoman from the fifth ward. Yesterday was her birthday. Our executive director of the Affordable Housing, uh, Commission, uh, April Ford Griffin. She celebrated her birthday yesterday.
Wow. Happy birthday to April Ford Griffin.
Happy birthday.
One from the nineteenth. All the one from the nineteenth.
Mute myself. There we go. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Gay District, part of Gay District, well, Gay District East, Gay District West, part of it, Tiffany and Botanical Heights. There will be a cleanup tomorrow, May 1st, from, uh, 9:30 till noon. And Terry Park will have a social gathering from noon to two. If anyone would like to stop by and meet our residents, feel free to do that. And then on the following Saturday, there will be another cleanup that, uh, will take place along that Lafayette Street, uh, barrier for the Highway 44. So I wanted to thank everyone who is being considerate with their time to keep their community nice and clean and also, uh, making sure that, uh, we pay attention as well. So I just wanted to make sure if you're interested, come out tomorrow either for the cleanup and/or the social gathering. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, trying to give an assist to the older woman from the first. I believe his last name was Arrington. Uh, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the eighteenth, you're, you're muted.
This comes in Saturday, uh, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. We, the Eighteenth Ward and Keep Nature Clean is having a cleanup at 511 Maple Avenue in the front, uh, in the front of a Durlig building. We will also be serving hot dogs and beverages. So if you want to come by and help clean up, uh, and eat some hot dogs with us, uh, and have a good time. It's a very nice day. We would appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-third, you're muted.
I know. I was unmuted myself. If, if the committees are formed, I'd like to hold a public safety meeting Thursday at 10 a.m. to get three, four, and 12 out if, if together, so.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. All the one from the eighth.
Thank you, Ms. President. Um, I want to recognize, because it'll happen before our next meeting, that next Thursday, May 6th, is Give STL Day. So this is a, a massive region-wide event to raise a lot of money for nonprofits. There are all sorts of incredible organizations that are participating in this day. Um, I'm personally happy alongside the Alderman from the ninth to uplift employment connection this year. But I try to, I try to give a little bit to as many different organizations as I can find that day. And if, if you're someone who was blessed during the pandemic and your stimulus is, is sitting in your bank account, may I just kindly suggest getting that money out to people and organizations that are doing good work with it? Thanks so much and can't wait to uplift our region with you all together.
Right. Thank you. All the woman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it's really exciting for me to hear so many cleanups in our city this weekend. I have yet another one to bring to the attention of the board. Uh, this one's in Dutch Town. It's actually the 25th, but I'm going to be sharing it, uh, on behalf of Alderman Cone. St. Joseph Housing Initiative will be hosting a cleanup, an alley and block cleanup in the 4600 block of Alaska from 9 to noon. I hope people are able to join if you, uh, live around Dutch Town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, all the one. All the one from the fourth.
I yet have another cleanup this Saturday, so our city is getting spick and span cleaning. This is from the Kingsville Association tomorrow from 9:30 to 12 in the alleys of the 47th through 4800 block of Lavigne.
All right.
Welcome any volunteers.
Okay. Thank you, all the women. All the women from the eleventh. Uh, all the ones from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let everyone know that I have a May Day baby and happy fifth birthday to Emma.
Oh, Emma, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Emma. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Awesome. That's awesome. That made, that, that made our day. I, I appreciate that. With that, Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I, uh, move to excuse the Alderman from the sixteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-eighth for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from fourteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, we move to adjourn till April, oh, April, till May 7th, 2021.
You don't want to do that. That'd be a lot, that'd be a, that'd be a really short session. Been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion. I didn't catch that.
Second from the twelfth.
Oh, there you go. Alderman from the twelfth. I need to get to, get to know your voice better. I'll be able to pick it up right away. Alderman from, uh, moved by Alderman from tenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Too late, too late. You know, have a, have a great weekend and a great week. See y'all next week. Bye-bye.